Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just pray, most gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day, Lord, we thank you for the beauty of your creation that we're allowed to be a part of. We thank you, Lord, for people who dedicate their times to trying to make life better for the citizens of Alagani County. Lord, we lift up those that have been impacted by this virus, and we pray, Lord, that there will be a cure for this, hopefully soon. Lord, I just ask that you keep direct the things that we do in this meeting for your glory. We do it for the right reasons, for the right cause. These things we ask in your holy name. Christ takes them in.
Welcome everybody here. COVID-19, all try to stay six feet apart going through our meeting. Stay compliant with everything. First thing we need to amend is...
Who would let be going, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think he'll speak again. He's not coming on anymore.
I don't believe it's working.
And, Mr. Chairman, also, if we could move High Country Workforce Development discussion to the fore, right after public comments. Mr. Deveraux has to travel to Boone after the, uh, he finishes here, and I would like to get him on the road as quickly as possible, sir. Motion to accept is amended, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is indeed an honor and pleasure to come before this board tonight. Um, I had sent you some information, and you have some in your folder. Um, wanted to start out with this COVID-19, it really has impacted the way that we provide workforce services, but nonetheless, I wanted to ensure each and every one of you that the citizens of Alagani County are receiving their workforce services. We've had to get very creative, and we've been providing those workforce services remotely and virtually. Um, since we, our offices are in the Alagani, um, library, we have, um, had to send our staff home and the state DWS staff so that we could, um, provide services remotely and virtually. So that is going well. Um, if you guys have any problems or any concerns with that, or if you've, anyone's not getting the services that they need, please feel free to contact my office. I wanted to share with you tonight, I was asked to come, um, due to the, um, your appointment to the High Country Workforce Development Board. Um, so I've sent back, and Mr. John Irwin, Commissioner Irwin, was wanting some information, so I contacted the Department of Workforce Solutions. They're a department of, the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and the reason that they felt that they rendered that determination, if you will look in the inside of your, um, folder on the left-hand side, the highlighted area of why they were deeming that the State Employees Credit Union did not meet the criteria for a private sector, and I highlighted their last, um, place. It says, "While a not-for-profit entity may serve as a business representative on a local board, they must operate as a business and be employers in key industry sectors for the state and local area that serve the public." The State Employees Credit Union does not meet this requirement. A credit union is a not-for-profit cooperative financial institution owned by its members who use its services. Credit unions exist to provide a safe, convenient place for members to save money and to obtain loans at reasonable rates. Profits made by the credit union are returned to the membership in the form of reduced fees, higher savings rates, and lower loan rates. The State Employees Credit Union Board of Directors is comprised of 11 members of the credit union. Those volunteers serve without compensation and represent the diversity of the membership. Um, so that is why the North Carolina Department of Commerce Division of Workforce Solutions, um, rendered their decision. I wanted them to put that in writing, so I requested that, so that you guys would have that on their letterhead, so it wouldn't just be me telling you from a email. I felt that if the state is going to render a decision such as that, then it needed to be on official documents so that we would know their position and determination. Um, also wanted to let you know that, um, I included the labor market overview. It's behind the letter, um, that I just referenced. Um, want to let you know that your unemployment rate is 6%. Um, this labor market information does not reflect the last two months of March, when the bottom dropped out of everything. So we are going to see unemployment rates continue to rise. Um, I know a lot of you probably have been getting calls or have heard on the news that the, um, state call center, that they are swamped. Um, they have been processing claims, but our old and equated state system just could not handle the mass volumes of what was going through. Um, while I am the High Country Workforce Development Board, where two different parts, the, the part that handles the unemployment is the Division of Employment Services, and we're the Division of Workforce Solutions. So they, we used, it used to be under us, but they moved it over to a different department. So our people are assisting. We don't have all of the authorizations to do what a DES person does, but we have been doing a little bit to lighten that load. As you, um, might have seen on the news, the governor has told DES that they need to get more training, get more workers in there to help process those claims, because we do realize that that is a real economic burden, and people are depending on those unemployment claims. So, um, we're doing all that we can on that front. Um, wanted to let you know that, um, some of those workforce services from the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act that are being provided to people that qualify and are eligible are intensive case management services, on-the-job training. That, by that, that's when, um, we have funds that will pay a portion of a person's salary for a company to train them, because it is very expensive for companies to train new employees, and they put them with the more seasoned people. So those are funds that we have available to help businesses train new employees or to upscale, um, their current employees for jobs in their, um, facilities. Also, there are the work experiences, that's where, um, it's very, um, good program where the youth, they do work experiences with some companies or, um, careers that they want to go into, and we also cover those wages. Um, the big thing that we're probably going to be looking at after all of this is our dislocated workers. Um, as you know, when business and industry lay off, or if they close, then those, that produces a dislocated worker who has lost the, a job at no fault of their own, or that their hours have been cut due to a layoff or plant closures. Um, we just applied for, where we're sending in the application, because we feel that we are going to see an uptick in dislocated workers due to this COVID-19. We're hoping everybody's going to go back and that those jobs are going to be there, but there might be some new jobs, or they might have consolidated some jobs. So there will be funds available to, um, do training for dislocated workers. So wanted to just brief you on that, and at this time, I'll take any questions or concerns that you may have. This Commissioner Bobby Irwin.
I'm looking at the unemployment rate at 6%, and I, then I'll look at the other counties, where at the top of that, of this list, at 6%. Now, you talk about the workforce development, you work with the community college systems also, don't you?
Yes, we do. Um, they are a workforce partner. Um, as we have a great rapport with Wilkes Community College, they used to be our WIA provider and provided the, um, intensive case management services, but, um, Wilkes Community College wanted to go in another direction, and so now we have ResCare. Um, they're our WIA provider, and we just, um, bid that out. We have to bid out our WIA provider contract every three years, it has to go out, and this year, starting July 1, Goodwill Industries of the Northwest will be our WIA provider. So we are very excited about that. Um, Goodwill is a good partner, and they're, um, bringing a lot of good ideas and a lot of energy and possibly some, um, funding that will help, um, as a WIA provider. So we are very excited about, um, our new partnership with them.
Uh, Ms. De, Ms. Deveraux?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for coming. I would note, let everybody know that this letter is dated May the 4th, so, uh, it's rather recent. We were not aware of it until you brought it in. And Mr. Deveraux and I had a conversation prior to the meeting beginning, and I believe we've cleared a little bit of air and given some information, uh, that we had. I explained to Mr. Deveraux that, uh, we're rather challenged to find people that meet the criteria in Alagani County, especially in the situation we're in right now. Uh, he did advise that we can request a waiver, and I would suggest that we do that while we continue to search for a replacement. Uh, now, I do have a question for you, Ms. Deveraux. Is a county commissioner also a member of this board?
County commissioner member of this?
From here. Do we have a representative as a county commissioner on that board?
Your representative on the High Country Workforce Consortium Board is none other than your illustrious chairman, Mr. Bill Osburn. So he is on the consortium board, and, um...
So that's different from the one that we're talking about now?
Yes, it's different. The consortium board, they appoint the public sector people, and your consortium board member, it came about that long time ago when they, um, decided they were going to do these workforce funds, that each of the seven counties, that there would be a county commissioner, either the chair or their designee, and they would serve as the consortium board. And they appoint people to the High Country Workforce Development Board, just like your board appoints the private sector business, um, leaders. So your representative, you know, on the workforce consortium board is Mr. Bill Osburn. Right now, on the, um, High Country Workforce Development Board, it is, um, Mr. Smith from the TV, yes.
Okay, I've been speaking with Mr. Smith, and the information that he said is provided is outstanding, and certainly we need it in the county. Uh, my concern was, we've got to have representation. Doesn't do us any good to put people on boards so that they can, uh, build a resume and not attend. Of course, in this situation, it doesn't apply, uh, because of the elderly parents, but, uh, now that... But now that we are going through the economic situation that we are, it's going to be imperative that we do have representation. Now, I'm going to recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we do request a waiver. You can send that off, and that we table the nomination until we get a reply. At the same time, it behooves all of us to start looking for a replacement if we do not win this battle. We're a small county, we're a poor county, and we need all the help we can get. We need people there finding out what's available to us, and sir, you have a wealth of information that we need. Apologize for bringing you down here. I wish I'd have known about the letter beforehand so that we could stop it, but it's good to see you. And I understand that you worked here in Allegheny County once before, and it's nice to get back to God's country.
It is truly a beautiful county, many, many years ago. And let me address why that May 4 date is there. I was pushing the Division of Workforce Solutions. If you ever think that you do not have an advocate that goes up against the state, I feel very strongly that our rural region's made up of the seven counties. I'm your most fierce advocate for rural counties for workforce funds. But I had requested that last week, and it was this hem-haw around, they said, well, we'll get it to you. And the holdup was that they said that they were waiting for the signature. So Chet Modershey, who is the Director of Field Operations, just signed that today, and they scanned it into me, and that's why I put it in the packet, so...
I certainly understand, because I started Wednesday of last week, and I have called at least four times a day, leaving my voicemail, because everybody's working at home, and apparently they are working awful doggone hard, because I haven't gotten a reply yet, but I think you've answered it. Thank you, Ms. Deveraux, and again, my apologies for bringing you out, but thank you for being so conscientious and coming.
No need to apologize. At any time you guys need any information or would like for me to attend to give information, that's what I'm here for. That's part of you being part of that great organization, the High Country Council of Governments, and that we feel that all of our seven counties are greatly important. So it is never inconvenient for me to get out and come to a meeting.
Any other questions?
Do, what's the terms on this position that we're trying to fill? When does it, has it expired? When does it expire?
The position currently is up June 30, 2020. It is, once they are appointed, they are appointed for a two-year term. So whoever you appoint will go into June 30 of 2022.
And the frequency of the meetings?
We meet every other month, so that might be the selling point when you're trying to get people to attend. They won't have to attend 12 meetings. We meet every other month, so the workforce board meets six times a year unless we have a special-called meeting.
Are you Zoom meeting now, or?
Well, we were looking at that possibility to do a Zoom meeting, but we only have for our next meeting coming up next week, and we only have two agenda items. So we're probably going to try and let them vote by email on that to, so that we won't have to go through that process. But we'll start back up in July.
Any other questions? Travel safely, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming. And for your thing, if you, your waiver, if you're contesting that, write it, and if you need that mailing address, I'll send it to Drew, she's my best friend. We've been sending a lot of information. She probably gets sick of hearing from me from sometime, but I will send you the mailing address for the people. I'll send you Chet Modershey, and also Jessica Engler, who is the Assistant Secretary for the Division of Workforce Solutions. And if you feel so implied, you can even, I'll even get you the Secretary of Commerce, Anthony Copeland's, information, so that you guys will be able to send your requests for waiver in.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Jennifer Green, is she around?
She's in there.
Oh, I'm sorry. She, I couldn't, couldn't see you back there. Jennifer Green, Appalachian Hills.
Before you turn to her, you didn't actually vote on that. There was a request made to request a waiver, but you didn't really vote.
I requested that we table.
We didn't vote on that either.
Drew?
We had a motion and a second.
We have no one to vote on.
I don't think there was really a motion.
Make a motion that we table the nomination.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion in the second and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote.
I'm happy now.
Thank you, your honor.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, I just want to say thanks for having me tonight. Today, we announced our seventh case here in Allegheny County, so I've seen that already. So we've jumped pretty quickly in a week, and I guess what I can tell you is just that I'm fully expecting us to have more cases with more ease of restrictions, more people traveling about, and just the fact that this virus is so easy to spread. So that's why I'm wearing my mask today, I want to just honor you all. So we have one instance this past week where we had a manufacturing plant with one positive case in an employee. The next day, we found out we had two more. So on Friday, I'm really proud of our team, they went out and tested 69 people at the plant to try to make sure if we had others who were positive and just didn't know it, that we could isolate and quarantine people. So we're still waiting on some of those results, but majority of the results have come back negative, which is good news. But we could see some additional cases in the, you know, coming days from that. Continuing to work to staff up our contact tracing efforts. We had a call with some of our staff today who have been managing phone calls to try to shift some of their work to help us with contact tracing. You know, the state is going to be offering some support to provide contact tracing staff for health departments, because there's just not enough. As we test more and we find more, we're going to need more people to do that investigative work and to reach out to people. So, but before they get ready in the next month, we're going to probably need some extra help for our nurses. So we do have some staff that are shifting some of their work, recording their time appropriately so that we can try to hopefully count some of that and get it reimbursed in the future. But we'll say, you know, one of the exciting things the state announced this week is they're going to be working with a digital app through Microsoft that will help give more people access to monitor for symptoms, check their own symptoms if they want to, and be routed to be tested if they have concerning symptoms. So that's going to be an extra help for us to be able to identify people who may have COVID-19 and just don't know it. Our staff will have to go through some training on that, and we will be working with them to, to get them hooked up with that soon. I guess beyond that, we are still working hard to prepare for prevention efforts. We've been fortunate that we have a local hotel here who's willing to house people that don't have housing and don't need hospital care. That's going to be an expense that we're preparing for, but it's important. We know that this is not like a storm, we can't put everybody together. We've got to have separate bathrooms and bedrooms for people if, if they can't separate effectively. We also have some ordered thermometers to try to get out to farmworkers, growers who are hiring farmworkers. We know they need that extra support, so we still have yet to get them. We've been waiting for them for about three weeks, but we hope to have those soon. We have done some outreach with farmworkers, and we'll continue to do that. We've got some hand sanitizer, we're going to try to get out this week to farms that might need it, that we've purchased through some distilleries in the region. So our hope is to continue to respond appropriately, and I hope that we can continue to stay ahead of the virus. But I do think that we all should be prepared, we will likely see more cases. So I'm going to stop talking and see if you have questions for me.
Jennifer, do we have any idea how many non-residents there are in the county that have the virus?
Non-residents that have the virus, no. I mean, the only way to know that is by testing for the virus. So right, right now, the recommendation is that we test people with symptoms. So the only time that we would test broader is if we had a group of people who were living in a congregate setting. Farmworkers are one, but the plant is a good example, people who are working in close quarters. If we have one or two that are positive, then we investigate, and we, if we find out that there's more at risk, then we will go in and test a broader group of people regardless of symptoms. So that's really the best tool we have to try to find that out.
As a rumor has, you know, one community that has a lot of people that are here for the summer, and the rumor is there's quite a bit of virus out there.
Well, I can't tell you, under North Carolina Communal Disease Law, if we have someone here who's residing here, if they get treatment here, we will probably be notified. If they are a resident here and they say they live elsewhere, but they've never moved their permanent address, we get notified. So it's possible that we have people who we don't know about, but it's unlikely.
I've got a couple of questions on, you said, there's, there's a local employer who employs, I don't know how many people, but that's where a lot of your testing is concentrated. You did the testing on Friday, and how long does it take to get all of those test results back?
We got most of them this morning, we got some more this afternoon. I think we're pending like a handful left that hopefully will come in overnight. So it's usually taking a couple of days. I will say, shout out to Andy Blethyn, because he drove the lab samples to Raleigh so that they could get there. We are able to ship overnight when we can, but when we can't do that due to weekend timing, sometimes we have to take additional samples to, and drive it to their lab. So he did that for us yesterday.
Now, what's, like when a company or a big group of people like that are together, who has the authority to shut them down if, think if there's more than two positive cases, that's considered an outbreak?
Yes, and I will say, so, it's a complicated question, and I think it would be based on an imminent health hazard. Most employers have been very willing, and this employer in particular was very gracious and allowed us to come in the same day that we found out that we had some additional positive cases, and allowed their employees to come in and be tested. So I don't, you know, I think that that would be a thing that we would think carefully about and probably get some legal guidance before we move forward to shut a place down. I mean, I'm pretty sure the meat processing plant, Tyson, is still in operation, and I know they've had a lot of cases. So it would probably depend on a lot of factors, I would imagine.
So it's not necessarily the health department that can say yours closed, or is it?
Well, again, I think it depends, but, and I'm not trying to dodge the question, I just, I really think we would have to get some legal guidance. We can certainly use our power for imminent health hazards, that's in General Statute 130A, but we try to use that judiciously when it's absolutely necessary. So I can't, I mean, the only other time I remember thinking about us doing that is when we had a Legionella outbreak at a hotel, and they weren't cooperative, and that's been years ago. But that's, it's something we would take, obviously, the, the goal would be voluntary compliance, and we try to get the business owner to work with us, because it's not good for them either. If they have lots of people sick and they have to close down, that's, that hurts their business too, so...
There's a recommendation that people wear face masks. Is the employer obligated to provide those face masks to the employees?
So I'm not an attorney, my brother is one, but I am not, so I don't want to give legal advice. I guess I would say it is certainly a good idea to offer it. We are encouraging people who are in higher-risk settings to, to use face masks, but in general, in a public setting, if you have a face mask, it's certainly helpful to keep your germs to yourself. So I think if it's a possibility, certainly, it's a good thing to offer for folks. I also think, you know, the health department, we've sent emails out to our staff and said, for people who aren't in direct patient care settings, we've given them names of people who are making masks that they can purchase them from, just to recoup their cost. So it just depends on how you want to approach it. For people who are in higher-risk settings, like they're going to homes, I certainly think you would want to give them supplies, and they've been limited, I will say. I mean, most of the supplies that we've gotten, Daniel will tell you, they're directed more towards healthcare providers, so that's the reason for the cloth mask. It's, I've got an N95, but I'm not wearing it right now, I'm wearing this instead.
In your tracing that you do at this factory, did the, did the source that infected the other people, did they live in this county, or did they visit this county and infected other people?
No, it's hard to say. Sometimes we don't have all the answers, but the only thing we can say definitively is that we have, you know, these cases, and they're linked to the same employer. So you can certainly suggest that one or more of them were, were positive and the others picked it up. But you could also say, because we've had fewer that are positive, that they could have all been picked up in a community setting and brought into the workplace. So, you know, people are still going to the grocery store, they're still going out and doing their normal activities to some degree, even if it's limited. And we know that even wearing these face masks, it's not foolproof. It's to help protect you from my germs, but if someone in here were sick, it doesn't necessarily protect me from all of that. So, you know, we all have to still distance ourselves, stay home if we're sick, wash our hands frequently, that kind of thing.
One final question, will you retest the entire workforce at that plant in 13 or 14 days, or is one test all you do? And did 100% of the employees, administration in the labor, did all of them get tested?
I believe all the people we were concerned about were tested. In terms of other people, I'd have to get back with you, our nurses know more of the details than I do. But whether we would retest or not, you know, it's pretty expensive to do that, so we would probably save that if we had more cases that pop up, and then we would go back and probably do the same thing again. But...
Who, you said expensive, who pays for the test?
The department pays for it. We do, the health department pays for the test. $52 a test, so do the math.
This is something that wasn't figured in your budget last year, or even talked about this year, of doing this testing?
No, we're fortunate that we've been able to apply for some grants to hopefully help offset some of the costs, but I will say, I'm pretty worried. We have a downturn in our revenue, you know, our revenue is really what, that we bring in is what supports us the most. So that is certainly a concern. We've reached out to our state legislators to ask them for consideration as they move forward in their, you know, coronavirus response efforts to, to remember the local health departments, because we are going to need some, we're going to need some help. I mean, we have revenue that's, we're probably about 50% of our normal activities, and that's just because that's how all healthcare is going right now. Hopefully, we'll be able to recoup that over time, but that's where we are at this moment. Thankfully, we, because we are doing this extra work here as a health center, it's allowed us to generate some additional dollars in grants that we have applied for. We just got notified that we got another competitive renewal, renewal of our health center grant, and that allows us to do primary care, substance use disorder work, behavioral health, and dental care. So we're trying all we can to bring in extra dollars so that we save the county money. All, all of... all of our county's money, so.
Jennifer, is there anything on the horizon you mentioned about the, trying to find the thermometers, take a temperature for the farmers? Mask for their workers, because most of your planning equipment, you're setting this real close.
We have, so we've purchased some masks from a, there's a local business in Boone that has switched their operation to producing masks that cover a surgical mask. What we've been trying to do is secure enough masks to be able to take some to them too. We've shared some with healthcare providers. So yeah, certainly, that would be something that we would be happy to help with if we can source it.
I've got a question, well, a scenario.
Okay.
If someone that's, lives in Winston-Salem, summer home here, tests positive in Winston-Salem, they tell them to quarantine, so they come to Allegheny County. Do we know they, where they are?
Not necessarily. And we communicate pretty frequently. So we've had a couple of, probably about three different situations in our district where we've had people who have sought care, they've gotten sick, and through that process, and the doctors notifying us like they're required to do, we find out that information. So we do find out, like, we had a positive test come in in Watauga County, and it was actually someone who lived in Charlotte. So that helped us go, okay, well, we have this extra count, so we've gone up one, but we were able to transfer that case back to their home county. For here, you know, in all of our areas that have second homes, it's hard to tell. I mean, if people aren't abiding by the quarantine orders that are issued, or the isolation orders, if they're positive, we have no way of knowing that if they're coming in.
Isn't that a glitch in the system?
Um, but...
I mean, something where you are quarantined, but if you leave this area, go to another, you must notify, so that we know?
Yeah, I mean, the orders, I can tell you that I sign for people, it says, you must not leave this address, or you can be subject to, you know, fines and jail, up to jail up to two years or something, so.
You don't have enough law enforcement to go check?
Well, you know, it's tricky, because people have freedom of movement, and if they own property, it's hard to control that. But you're right, it's a valid point.
Concerned, we had, I believe, the county manager and I, we were getting bombarded with, we need to stop, put up roadblocks, roadblocks on the major highways and start a checking people. And we asked Ms. Miller how many second homes we have in the county. There's over 3,000 second homes. So if a man and a woman go to their second home in Allegheny County, we've increased our population by 50%.
Yeah. Best thing we can do is continue to get the word out. If people are sick, we want to test them. And if they are second homeowners, if they're traveling through, it doesn't matter to us, we want to help them get tested and isolate or quarantine people who are close contacts. So we will continue to do that.
All my questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Anybody else?
Would just like to say thank you for what you're doing, your staff. Your hands are full, but you're getting up and going every day, and we do appreciate. What can we do to help, is a question. And then another, maybe a answer, partial answer to that is if maybe this board could reach out to our legislators officially to say, you know, just remember and do what you can, and if there's federal monies and things that come for this, you know, make sure that we're not missed, and try to help you in that regard. Which is helping us as well, because obviously the funds are coming from three counties, so.
I appreciate that question very much, and we'll certainly pass along your thanks to our staff who've worked really hard. I think the biggest thing is, you know, we, we're concerned about revenues, and we're concerned that it's, you know, we have needs at the state health department level for infrastructure, but we also have needs here locally. I think the outreach us sent to Senator Ballard and Representative Stevens said, we get less than $30,000 a year for communicable disease in three counties. And there's over 75 reportable illnesses in North Carolina. So that means that every time there's a case of whooping cough, every time there's a case of mumps, every time there's a case of meningitis, every time there's a case of COVID-19, we, our staff, work in the, behind the scenes. And the only reason that you all know about all of this is because this virus is so big, is so new, that we haven't been able to control the spread of it. But it takes people to do that. I mean, we have nine nurses, and we wouldn't have that many if we didn't have the grants to support their existence. We have two here, but we work as a team, so we sent people over to help take all those test samples on Friday. And we will continue to do that, because, you know, we work better together when we're stronger together. So I think whatever you can do to try to encourage both locally and at the state level, whenever there's funding, remember that the local health department needs some infrastructure dollars, you know. And if we have that, we ask less of the county. I mean, we certainly don't want to over-ask for funding. We want to be good stewards, and, you know, that's the reason we apply for so many grants. And it's not been easy to manage all of that in the midst of all of this too. But we're committed to doing it, because I think that that's the right thing to do. So to answer your question, that's the best way you can help us, is to remember that we do need resources to have the people to do this work.
Any further questions? Any stimulus money slanted towards the health departments?
We have some funds that are coming, because we're a health center, and I hope that we don't spend it all on test kits and hotel rooms for people. I hope that some of it will help cover some of the lost revenue we have this year. We're losing a lot of money. The last time Angie ran the numbers, she's expecting somewhere around $100,000 a month that we're down. And so we've done really well all year, up until like March. And just like everywhere else, we're concerned. I will say, the other way that we're trying to help people is, you know, if people have lost their jobs, if they've become unemployed, if they don't have insurance, we care for people regardless of all of that. So, you know, remember that we're a resource too. Our behavioral health providers have been really busy doing telehealth visits, and we'll continue to serve people regardless. That funding is one-time dollars, and is to carry us through the next year. We did get some money set aside from CDC as well, but again, it's probably going to all be sucked up into the costs of responding.
It's just about a perfect storm for you.
Yeah.
Because our revenues are going down, sale tax is going to go down, it's...
It's tough for counties too, right now, and everybody, it's hard.
Cola Samson, we certainly appreciate what you folks do up there.
Thank you.
Taking care of everyone.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for having me. You all take care.
Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, thanks for having me.
Good night, babe.
Just in for one.
Okay, I will.
I'm safe.
Next on the agenda is finance. Carter will take care of that. Karen's?
I will do my best, Mr. Chairman. Several, several items, and for some reason, I feel really loud right now, so.
He's had a little...
May have to back away from the microphone just a little bit. But first item on the screen, a spreadsheet that identifies salary line item transfers. And what this is, first of all, everyone remember that this is leap year. So what, what basically has happened is normally, there are 26 pay periods in a fiscal year. This year, there are 27. So the lines that you see on the screen are all inter-department transfers. This does not change your bottom line whatsoever. Just makes the necessary changes to facilitate that additional pay period. That is, that is the, I guess, first request, is to consider motion on those salary line item transfers.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion here, second.
Thank you.
Got a motion, second, and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. 5-0.
Second one, we begin, and I'm multitasking, so you bear with me. These sheets are fairly small, so what the next three sheets are, they're all spreadsheets. If you look at them, the first one is termed an explanation of expenditures. What this is, is you'll look at the columns. First one says FY 2021 recommended budget. These are the categories in which your budget are broke down into. So if you go down that, that first, where it says health and human services, you'll see a variation of different agencies and departments, public safety, education, right on through, all three of those pages. Those numbers will match the numbers that you will be presented at your public hearing. I think during our work session, we've also passed those numbers out. But they will, they will be items that are in replicate of that. The second column is called outside revenue funds. Again, that follows through on each of the three pages. And what those numbers are, are just exactly what it says. It's funds not generated locally, they are funds received from outside sources. Next one is expenditure of all county revenues. And if you look at that, that's actually an amount at the revenues projected by the county, that's your tax dollars going into it. If you, if you kind of work backwards, if you look at your FY 2021 column, you'll see $6,000. And I'm looking at the in-home aid, the first one there. $3,180 comes from an outside source, $2,820 comes from within. So that's how you get to that $6,000 number. Next column is called revenues generated in county. And if you'll look, there's, there's a sample on page, on the first spreadsheet, there's one on the second, and there's not one on the third. What that column represents is funds that are generated by departments within the county. So if you look down, we'll go public safety, you look down at emergency medical services, also on that line's $392,000. That's what they have projected to bring in, in the upcoming year. And finally, if you look at county tax and miscellaneous expenses, you'll see that every line has, has that in it. If you, again, you kind of have to work backwards. If you take the expenditure of all county revenue column in the middle, and you add revenues generated in county, and county tax and miscellaneous expenses, that's what gets you to that number. The short of it is, and I did it A, B, C, D, and E, because it kind of helped me out, but column A is recommended, so to get to the number that equals column A, you add B and C, which is outside and expenditures of all. To get to what's called column C, you add revenues generated and miscellaneous expenses. This is a, is a spreadsheet that was, that was worked on. Karen had put this together, and unfortunately, she was not able to be here tonight. But it is a, it is a defining way of looking at the budget and how funding sources and expenditures plan to come in and go out. This will be much more of a, of a explanation at your public hearing, but these are just fact-finding and building platform type numbers. There are also three charts, I believe. These charts match up with those spreadsheets. You've got one, the first one, that's titled total expenditures. That matches, your charts identified on those spreadsheets. The next one is expenditures of all county revenues, and the third one is the property sales and undesignated revenues. So all of these correspond with these numbers, they just give you an idea of what percent of your stream that each one attributes to. So if anyone has any questions about that, I'd be glad to identify. Now, let me point out that I am, I give credit where credit is due. Lady in the finance office, Ms. Sidney Moxley, helped me with these today, because she and I played puzzle games with it all day. And she sent me a text, and I hope she's watching, she said she'd be rooting me on from you two today, so I want to throw that punch in there for her, so.
Now, are some of these numbers still subject to change?
Every number is subject to change. This is just proposed at this point. Yes, sir.
And you're, you're working on finding, hopefully, additional funds for some departments?
I think from what I've heard tonight, at least one of the departments, which is the health department, I think that, that that's an item that we may ought to try to find some additional funds for. It's not accounted for in the expenditures in your proposal, but I would like to try and look at that differently.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That was deja vu all over again.
Mr. Chairman, I do, would point out, I think there may be discrepancy, and I say that very hesitantly, because the people that put this together have a lot more insight than I do. But there's, on the JCPC, down on the other, which would be under special appropriations, I think there is some outside monies that is, that is not listed there.
Very well could be.
I think, I think there's something like a 20% local amount, and then the rest of that number is amount. But that's the only one, because then I happen to be familiar with the funding there, so that may...
We noted. I'll clear that one out.
Any other questions?
Country workforce, he's done being here. Prison Development Authority.
Chairman, I think I have that too. So the first one is the amendment number two, and the amount of $10,223. And I have an explanation for that. So what this, what this looks like, and I have to say looks like, because I wasn't here when it was done, what it looks like is back in December of 19, the two largest bed and breakfast locations here in Allegheny closed. My understanding, they closed on 12/31 as an official date. It appears that an adjustment to the revenues were made at that time to decrease the budgeted amounts down to reflect the closing of those two bed and breakfasts. It also prevented the TDA, when you, revenues, from overspending their budget, because it's based on the revenues. Recent data appears that the closing of the two locations really didn't impact the revenues that were originally projected, and now allows for the increase identified above, which is the $10,223. So with that in mind, the amendment of 10223 reflects the increased ability to manage your budget in that amount for such TDA usage. the increased ability to manage your budget in that amount for such TDA usage.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion here second.
Okay.
Motion second and discussion. On favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Moving on down to General Fund Budget Amendment Number 14.
Your, your second one, I have that up now. Also, this, as Commissioner Evans pointed out, this, this deal is primarily with the JCPC. And the explanation that we found for this one is the JCPC will begin receiving additional monies from the state each month for the juvenile court. That has been discussed with the board in the past. This money is a fiscal year grant award, so it has to be spent in the fiscal year it is received. County should receive the first payment for this additional funds in the next day or two. Was the explanation that I received for it.
And additional explanation, you could not put it in these other figures until the board approves it. Because we aren't going to get it until we say we want it.
That's correct.
Motion to approve, sir.
Motion here second.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Next business is reinstate Monday, May the 25th of 2020. All day is a paid holiday.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion here second.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Raise your right hand. Five oh.
Thank you for the county employees.
That's right. Pending fees paid to the Commissioners effective 3/24/20.
Motion we accept.
Second. Motion and second and discussion.
How much did that save the county?
At the time, we figured about $6,300.
Their tax rate now.
Motion second and discussion. On favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Mr. Chairman, I would just kind of point out where that says fees. That's compensation. I mean, in case the public's kind of wondering, they get a fee associated with it.
Question on reopening Allegheny County offices. What's the feeling of the board?
May I make a comment first? We have received a phone call or two, or an email or two, or an inquiry just of, of any nature about when the county is going to open back up, how we're going to do this, how are we going to phase it in. I'll just heard what, what the Health Department did and said. And of course Drew is here, she could, she answers the phone more than I do. But I don't think that we're getting that many inquiries. I know there are concerns about the, the tag office. There, there are some concerns about, you know, some of those functions. But I understand that there's supposed to be a potential update, I believe, May the 8th, which, which is before your, your next meeting. Certainly don't want to, it's your guys' call, but, but I would, I would recommend that we stay as we are, at least until your next meeting, to see how this... I mean, we, we're starting to develop more and more cases here. That's my rough thoughts.
You're recommending staying shut down at least till the 18th?
Yes, sir.
With no provision for the tag office to open?
Yes, sir.
With the original date we set before shutdown? And it May 13th or something like that? That's roughly 10 days longer than the governor's recommended.
Don't know what the governor's going to say till Friday. He hates when he's supposed to make his Phase One, if that happens.
You know, it looks rather bad whenever you can go to Food Line. They can operate. You can take same guidelines as Food Line and operate the county government, in my opinion.
Well, it's, it's just not Food Line. You can go to the big box stores, and all of them are operating.
Well, we can't do elective surgery, but we can do abortions every day also.
But the small business person is the one that's suffering the most.
Right.
That's the, that's the kicker. They've still got to pay, as far as I know, for their food, rent, insurance, how to provide for their children, clothes. And the county employees are still getting paid. State employees are still getting paid. It's not affecting the big organizations. It's affecting the small individual person. Just, no doctor, so I can't comment. Last week, I was all for opening back up, and then this happened at a, at one of our factories, and that, a new thought into my process, but still, it's, it's hard on people that work by the hour and don't have a job.
Well, even the factory that was affected, they're still working. Now, I, I would recommend we open up the county offices, but that would be subject to anyone entering the building having a mask on and all of our employees having the partition and the mask also. Give them as much protection as we could.
Are we going to provide the mask to the people who come in?
They have to. Provide their own.
If they want to come in, they can find a mask. Or a facial covering. Not necessarily an N95.
Yeah, it don't have to be the, she was wearing one she'd made. Don't have to be N95. I don't know, I like to, I know it's tough on business. It's tough on everybody. I just like to err on the side of caution myself. It's, oh, we win a month with two cases. All of a sudden, in five or six days, we've got six, five more.
I would say that was two known cases.
Well, that's true, and that's what we got to look at on paperwork is. Known cases in five.
Amount of testing, they were pulled, they pulled back on the amount of testing. And cases, I think, showing up now for two reasons. One is for more, and then there's more testing, more is going to be identified. If the alternative is to wait until it's eradicated, or there's a vaccine, there's a flu vaccine, and we still have the flu, so.
Happens to people who sell land or making transfers at the Register of Deeds office that, I mean, it's legal doctrine and I don't...
I'll tell you what happens. When an attorney does a closing, we have to call the Register of Deeds office to make an appointment to bring the paperwork down, or we mail it in. If we make an appointment, they meet us at the door and they take the paperwork from us.
Business is still taking place.
Business is still taking place. It's cumbersome, but we're doing it.
Do we do the same with the tag office?
I may not be the right one to answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
We could check on that and see. I mean...
I personally just hate waiting till the 18th, when the governor's rec... unless he changes his mind, the 8th. No matter what decision we make, it's going to be, somebody's going to say, well, you caused it, or somebody's not going to say, well, you did a good job. It's if that one more person gets, gets tested positive, then it's obviously our fault. It's not the Chinese, it's not the virus, it's our fault.
The governor, the governor didn't, didn't put a limitation on the short-term rentals. That was an act by the...
That was us.
County Commissioners, which is part of this equation.
We, we will need to extend that if we stay the course, because that, that drops out.
Only thing that I can add, got a message asking about the DMV portion. Cole Edward, who works upstairs, and he says, "All DMV registration, late fees, and driver's license offices are waived until August."
We can't stay shut down till August.
I, I'm just reading what was in the text.
Body else is.
Hell with everybody else. They've got jobs, they've got income coming in, and you got people out here that are on the brink of going flat broke. What are they going to do for their livelihood? They're not like people that are getting retirement, people that are getting Social Security, people that work for the government that are still getting their paycheck. It's easy for them to say, wait till August, wait till there's a vaccine. The country's got to function at some point.
So you can run around with an expired tag until August. I received a phone call from someone that rents out a cabin this afternoon. He has rentals, reservations. He doesn't know what to tell them. Know who the, who the people are at most risk. Most of us are sitting around this table right now. Life, life is a risk in itself. More, becoming a fetus is a risk. You have got to open these things up and let people work. Fortunately, that the governor's on right now, you look on the news, you've got just about riots all over the dang-gone country because people are wanting to get out.
Yet you can still go to Walmart, you can still...
You cannot go to church, but go and look at Lowe's parking lot on a Saturday. It's going to be risk. Might as well, I have no problems with opening up the county offices, but the stipulation is, you come through, you come in the building, you must have a mask on, we'll protect our employees, and we will continue on. If anybody is not going to die sitting in here, you don't have to worry about that. You just let me know. We're all going to die. I don't want to die of old age after everything I've been through. It's a risk that we have to take. You can walk outside that hatch right now and get hit by a meteor. They love air. Start open... We're the government, we're the, we're telling people what to do. We're taking their dang-gone money, and we're hiding? Come on.
Let's move forward, Dan.
Well, are we going, are we going to open up? We're going to, I make a motion that county offices open up with appropriate precautions.
Motion to hear a second.
Could we ask for guidance from the Health Department? If we open up, before we open up?
Say, she, she just was here. Protective clothing, the only one I was in this room, had on her mask.
I passed a woman coming here riding down the road in her car with the window down, and she's wearing a mask. Only person in the car.
My question is, can we pass this and do this before the governor opens things up?
Governor didn't shut down the county offices, did he?
People, if they act responsibly. And we've got people in here a while ago that were sitting side by side each other. They're family members. Still, six foot, doesn't apply to family members.
Got a motion on the floor to open it up. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I believe you have a second.
I'd love to see us get this thing going, but my concern is, if we try to open it without proper guidelines, what are we going to do? It's just like restaurants, you know? They need to go back to reservations, limit the number of people that's there. Golf courses need to do the same thing. But yeah, I'd love to see the county open back up, but I do want to see it until we've got procedures of how we're going to reopen. Are you asking for a second?
We got a motion. I'm asking for a second.
A second? Depending on what the Health, the, if it's done responsibly with the guidance of powers to be, Health Department or whoever.
How are we going to take a motion in a second, not knowing exactly what we're voting on? How's this going to work?
If the Health Department says no.
We're over here in my land, wondering what they're going to require us to do tonight.
Ask John to amend his motion.
How long a time span do we need to put protocols in place or to feel comfortable with what we have in place? I mean, I know we have some, some things in place, but as far as being open to the public, can we set a, if, if the governor opens Friday, I mean, I don't think we should be any less than that. If, and if that would give us some time to, a few days to establish, communicate with the Health Department and what we're doing, and see what the recommendations are to establish protocols for, in as safe as we can.
Make a motion, I'll, I'll modify my motion that we open the county off, uh, county offices contingent upon establishment of appropriate precautions. I will place the burden on the county manager to check with the Health Department. They advise him what we need. He gets it done, then he can open it up if we get three votes. You don't mean?
A second stands.
Give you a week, the 11th of May, by the 11th of May.
Motion, do you second that, Bobby?
Let her write it down.
Hurry is.
Hurry is. Okay. Motion to direction Allegheny County regards to COVID-19. Motion to accept changes and corrections. Oh, wait a minute. Conclusions on appropriate measure, I made 11th.
At Allegheny County offices?
Yes, the offices.
Whichever you all would like.
The only thing we have control over is Allegheny.
I've got a motion second and full discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, moving on down to job description changes. I trust everybody, hope everybody's read over these. Where we can vote on this and...
And I still couldn't sleep.
Pardon?
And I still couldn't sleep real good.
Where we can vote on this in one block.
Good evening. Yeah, this has been about a nine-month process. This process started with the department heads meeting with the employees, going over their current job descriptions. We were trying to get everything updated from about four years ago when the pay study was done. This actually came out of a conversation with the board at a retreat, I guess, over a year ago, wanting to possibly put performance evaluations in place. But we needed to make sure that we have all job descriptions current. So this did start at the employee level, went to the department head and supervisor level, then went to me at the end of the year. I have been reviewing them a little bit at a time and comparing with the pay study. And then last week, they went to the county manager for review.
It's going to cost us any additional money in 20...
No. These are just updates to the job description, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, is the county manager satisfied that, have you given your blessing, sir?
The ones presented, yes, sir.
I will add, we're still working on a few of those in a couple of departments.
More questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions? Anybody else?
I will make the motion that we accept agenda item 7A through Q.
Michael's been through all of them in coordination with April.
Ones that are on the agenda, I have reviewed, yes, sir.
And you're satisfied?
With the ones on the agenda, yes, sir.
Go on, you make a motion.
Yes.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
For the discussion, call in favor, raise your right hand. Five vote. Thank you. Throw down the public comment. You want to have anything, Brenda?
Oh.
Don't get excited there. Don't worry. Brenda Irwin and I live out at Twin Oaks. I just wanted to say, you all were talking about reopening the office buildings, you know, the different departments. Whenever I went down to the Bark Carolina West store today, they've got a sign out front that says, "No more than three customers in your, in the store at a time." I got there, I looked in, there were three people sitting in there, there was one person standing outside. So, then I made five people that were there to do business. One came out, the one in front of me went in. I went in. Very convenient. Of course, it was a nice day, we were undercover. If it's pouring down the rain, that might be a different story, but that's, that's an option. You know, that would be a simple, simple thing to do, is you set a limit of how many people can actually be. You know, if you've got this sized room, you can have more than three people in here, in addition to whoever else may be working in there. But that's, you know, that's one way to look at it, is look at your spaces in your different offices. People are gonna be coming in and out. The sign outside, you know, just wait here till somebody comes out. Will be a simple thing to look at, to solve maybe some of the problems.
Great, I was requesting the guidelines to reopen, so, yep.
You know, like I say, that, that was the, you know, that's what they were doing, and it, it's been that way two or three times I've been down there. You know, most of the time, there's nobody else in there, so I can go right in, but today, it was a nice, pretty day, so lots of people were out, so everybody did their turn. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And then, county manager comments?
I have a couple, couple comments. Like I hadn't talked enough tonight, and I'm about electrocuted myself with this cord. First one is, is four months old, so happy four months old to me. In those four months, there's a few things that I'm learning and discovering. One of the things that I'd, I would like to bring back up to the board is, sure that all of you have been out to the BDC, and you've, in that building, and seen the paving at that particular site. I have, and I actually went out to Eladassie Dale out here, and we had some conversations, but went out and looked at it, and I looked at your, your bidding process, I looked at the quotes you received, I looked at everything that went around at that time. The one thing I looked at was the year warranty that went with it. This was done, it looks like, sometime around August, which means your year warranty is about up. Like to go out before your next meeting, I'll take some pictures, whatever, but I think there's some areas of that pavement that we ought to look at before this warranty period gets away from us. So, yeah, it's just an item that I think we need to revisit. Now, the second one is, somewhere I have Commissioner Bobby had asked about the fire tax numbers, and I've got a sheet here that Drew was fortunate enough, if we could ask him, right? Kind of identifies what these numbers look like in each districts. That is, that's what we've been working with to, to the point we're at with having the public hearing on the fire tax and the numbers associated with that. And it's actually all the comments I have tonight.
County Commissioner comments. Herb and John over there.
Oh, we always begin with me, it seems, mainly because I usually end up eating crow. Last Commissioners' meeting, I mentioned at the end that I insinuated that the rescue squad members were not satisfied with the appropriation in the budget. Now, prior to that meeting, I had spoken with the chief and cleared up a misunderstanding about the funding, in that the county is going to reimburse for the, the workman's comp, the insurance, and also the matching of the grants, and I thought we had everything satisfied. I had a phone call from someone, and I did not catch the name, and I, to be quite honest with you, I'm the world's worst with names. I assumed that they were with the rescue squad, and they were unhappy with the budget. I assumed, and everybody knows what assume does, and I'm assured that it is not a member of the rescue squad. But, the rescue squad should take pride in knowing that a regular citizen is out there concerned about their budget. The rescue squad is going to receive approximately what they did last year, the way it works out, and we will continue to do that at the present time. I feel the Commissioners will agree with that. We are not contemplating a rescue tax because of everything it goes through, and whenever you look at the amount of funds that would be involved, it's simply not worth that. So, my apologies to the rescue squad, if you took offense to it. That's it, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Prince?
Would tell them that the rescue squad does take private donations?
Yes.
I'm proud of where we stand on the budget. I think we've got a good process, I think we spent a lot of hours discussing and fussing, but feel like we've done the right thing to, to balance it, to reward the citizens of this county, so. I think the manager and the committee, that's it.
Echo the same thing on the budget. That's what good about the budget, there's a lot of work going into that, and I appreciate what the committee done, and the manager, and the finance officer. Want to talk a little bit agriculture here for a minute. I got an email today, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Application opened for agriculture producers at noon today. That's for all agriculture producers in the county. They can, they can, they can check that out and go online and, and, after application, it's first come, first served, unfortunately, so it'd be good to get, to get that field out real quick. And one other thing is, we've got a national winner in Allegheny County. Leela Williams, her Asiaire calf, was selected from a, from over 40 entries nationally for the virtual Spring Asiaire Youth Show. She won first place in the whole nation, so that's quite a, that's quite an accomplishment for that gal. Yeah. Proud of her. Right? That's good. That's good, Yang Grant. Sure will you. Bobby?
Just a couple of quick things. We asked at, I think, the last budget meeting for fund balances from certain groups, have we gotten that? I know the school gave us their fund balance. What about the others?
If they've came in, they've came to the finance office and-
They've been asked to provide those fund balance numbers.
And some of them are included in the big book as well?
Just the Fire Department, but all those other organizations still haven't answered that we know of.
I can't say they have at this point.
I think that it talked about people that serve on committees, that we want to, as a board, want to establish a minimum, what we're looking for as, as for attendance. With, with all these groups coming up and all these nominations in the next few months, we need to move on that. I don't know if it's something that you need to come up with in April and then present it to the board, but we don't need to let it sneak up on us.
Commissioner Bobby, Commissioner Evans?
A couple of things. We have a public hearing coming up, and then I assume we're having our, it's kind of a question, too, our next meeting at, on the regular 18th, then the following day, a public hearing for two items, fire tax and budget. So, and we are discussing location, potentially change on that, or?
Public hearing?
Yes.
The big ad in the paper, which was quite large, said the meeting would be here, I think. I mean, we've already advertised it to be here.
I ask, is there a provision based on the anticipated turnout that allows the county to place a change in location?
We've done that before.
So, that is an available option. It may say that it's here, but there's an available option that we can change it if need be.
We need to go ahead and make it be known, I mean, if we want to move out to the, we're talking about moving out to the auditorium.
I think it would be wise if you did that.
The sooner you let that be known, the better, if that's what you're planning on doing.
We get that in this week's paper. That can happen, right?
How many are we looking at allowing to come in to this room? Would be the maximum.
One, two, three, four, about five.
I mean, they've got all this room down here. If we get away with half these tables, that would open that corner back up. This setup wasn't done by the Commissioners, this setup was done by the TV people. I mean, we can consolidate and still be six feet and allow more people.
Each of these squares are two-foot squares, so, so if we want to really get technical, we can measure off the appropriate distance, put an X with painter's tape on the floor and stick a chair on it, and that should accommodate more than the three that we have in here right now.
Or we could go to food lot, have the meeting in food lot.
We agree on moving out, Your Honor. We agree on moving out. Was that? I believe we agreed on moving out to the auditorium at one point, didn't we?
For the meeting or for the public hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Check with Charlie if you see, if he can tell about it.
But I think, I think the answer to the question was about the next meeting in here, was it not?
Oh, I mean, what was advertised in the paper was that our meeting was gonna be in this location. We're gonna make an amendment that we can move it if we have to.
Yeah, that was the budget, or the fire tax.
Fire tax.
Right. The budget's same night, do the both same night. So, we gonna move out to the auditorium?
I would, I would like to make that in the motion if you could.
Well, we need to, we need to see if it's available.
Wherever Donald says.
Because we can do it.
You can do it, but I don't know if it's, I don't know if the school will let you, but as far as can you, yes.
We don't own it, but we pay for it.
Yeah. Can't imagine that there's any school events going on right now.
I'll do a motion provided the school will let us use it in that-
Sure, and-
Back up and regroup.
And we also need to make the announcement on the meeting with the fire chiefs next Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Mr. Clark has a good point.
You want a motion, Mr. Chairman? Make a motion that we move the fire tax meeting to the auditorium, contentious on the approval of the Board of Education, sir.
And the budget.
And the budget, excuse-
Before there's a second, pointed out from the back of the room, it is not an item on the agenda, so we're deferring to legal to-
Just-
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, I heard him back there, I knew the motion was going on, and you were concentrating over that.
We voted on it's not on the agenda for action.
Discussing back there.
Timing issues, you have to go ahead and get in the paper.
If we just identify based on the anticipated turnout, we change that location?
I think that that was discussed at an earlier meeting, that you may change the location.
Yes.
It was.
I don't know that you need an, a motion at this point, since it was discussed at a previous-
Did talk about it before.
I will just go ahead and say that we'll make that appropriate change based on that earlier communication and go from there.
I think that you do need to do adequate precautions by putting notices on the door the night of, advertise as early as possible, put it on the website. Of course, if you announce it tonight, then viewers will see it.
Your motion?
I withdraw my motion, sir.
Comment that was brought up, I think by Larry, is, is somebody gonna clean the auditorium before we get there, sanitize it, and then are they gonna clean it once we leave? Who does that burden fall upon?
I think, if I looked correctly, I think Drew was maybe sending an email to the school system, so we'll, we'll iron that wrinkle as we need to.
One thing to add.
Okay, go ahead.
Got one thing to add to the Commissioner comments. I text Jennifer Green, and it says, "I will be glad to help for the areas that open following the governor's plan. What is the best way for me to get updated? To call Michael or what?" So, she's willing to be part of the, part of the solution.
Turn over contact, Michael.
That's on Friday, correct?
11th is-
8th.
The 8th.
I think the 11th is what we voted on.
The governor should say something on the 8th.
Yeah, but the governor may veto that.
That's right. What I'm saying is that, that gives me one day, basically, to get those steps in place. We can still eat lunch, we're good.
On your Superman suit.
See, one other, one other fire chief meeting, mission, fire chiefs?
That'd be the fire chiefs and the volunteer fire departments, chairman of the board, and it'd be Commissioners, will not be a public meeting on the 12th of May in this room.
Subject to limitations.
No.
Space or?
No. No. They'll be spacing, but that's it.
We'll have to space out six foot. It's the 12th, all right? Any other comments?
We got closed session.
Yep, I'm getting there. Request for closed session under statute GS 143-318.11.A/6 personnel. Statute GS 143-318.11.A/3 legal. Go into closed session this time.
Chairman, may I ask that you include April Halm?
Include it, April. HR.
I second that.
Sounds good.